I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the claims?
I just want to point out, I was talking to Mia before about the gas service because I was curious if we had that many facilities when I seen all those. And I just wanted to say that those are kicked in from different, what would you say they are, from different accounts? Is that correct?
We do have multiple facilities. However, the way that the bills are coded is that they're coded based on the cost center that's paying for those. So as you're moving through your claims approval list on the far right-hand side, you can see where they're coded. Just so for a case in point on page one, down at the bottom for Black Hills Energy, a portion of the bill is going to the building maintenance department. Another portion is the police department. There's public services, there's fleet, parks department, and so on. So they're just coded according to departments that are paying for them.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
That is all.
Okay, anything else?
All right.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes. Any other discussion?
No, Your Honor.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, we're adjourned at 6:47 PM then.
Thank you.
Regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven o'clock. Would Councilmember Borders lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Councilmember Rota?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today's many opportunities. We ask that you lead and guide us with wisdom to make the best decisions for the city and the constituents therein. We ask that you watch over us at this time as we convene in your name. Amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare a quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Any amendments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, any citizen in the audience wishing to address the council regarding any item that is already on the agenda will be given the opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Would the city clerk please read the consent agendas by consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes June 18, 2019, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes June 27, 2019, special council meeting, approval of approval of the minutes July 2, 2019, finance committee meeting, and approval of the finance committee recommendations for July 2, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
The recommendations from the finance committee were for claims to be paid in the amount of $275,255.82 manual checks in the amount of $199,478.32. Pay reliabilities for June 19, 2019 in the amount of $459,963.36 for a total of $934,697.50.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Rota and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Public hearing to consider the resolution number 1394, 2019 Riverton Master Plan. Community Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Heers Associates, the consultant working on the master plan has finalized the comprehensive draft or the draft of the comprehensive master plan. Their work began in October of 2018 and has been ongoing since. Public input meetings were held in February and April of 2019, as well as focus groups formed to specific for from specific stakeholders throughout the community in relation to the strategic plans contained within the master plan. Funding for the master plan update was provided via a grant from the Wyoming Business Council at 50%, the City of Riverton at 40%, and Idea Inc. at 10%. Six main areas of focus were targeted as part of the master planning process. Economic development, community development and design standards, tribal partnering opportunities, land use, transportation, and parks and recreation. The information and recommendations contained within the master plan have been borne out of the public meetings and the focus group meetings as well as an online survey conducted by the consultant. It is important to remember that the master plan is not a static document. It is a living, breathing document which can and should be updated from time to time in order to keep up with the inevitable changes experienced by our community. The master plan before you was certified and adopted in accordance with state statute by the Riverton Planning Commission at their June 20 regular meeting. Ms. Barbara Cloth with Heers Associates is in attendance this evening and has prepared a howdy master plan presentation. We would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Barbara Cloth. I am with Heers Associates and helped prepare this plan. So I wanted to just run through, and if there are any questions while I'm going along, please feel free to jump in. And then I have a spot at the end once I've gone through for questions as well. So the intent of this plan, it's an update to the 2009 document that was done for the City of Riverton. Many of the goals and the categories, land use, economic development, and the others remain the same. We took a more functional strategic approach than a traditional master plan. So what that means is we wanted to make sure it was a usable document for city staff, for council, and for the public. That when you're looking at it, you know, it's not all vague ideas. There are a lot of alternatives in the plan. And we tried to build in a lot more functionality so that it's really a useful document. And as Eric mentioned as well, something that should be referenced but can be modified as well, you know, building in more flexibility. So it can be a guide for budgeting, planning for future infrastructure like roadways, bike paths, anything like that, zone changes, and then planning for future strategies. Engagement opportunities included those stakeholder groups, public meetings, online survey. The online survey in particular had a very high number of responses. Over 150 people took that survey. So that was a really great indicator that people were interested in this. The number one area that people highlighted as being really critical for Riverton was economic development, which I'm sure doesn't really surprise anyone in this room. But just great feedback to have a lot of information from the public in there, and that's in case you want to see all the details. And then just some opportunities that different places we advertised. The planned chapters themselves, and I'm just going to touch on a couple of these tonight. But if there's anything in particular, I do have the plan document loaded on my computer that we can bring up any specifics as we go through. So the table of contents essentially were laid out. We have the introduction, discussion on why goals were selected, why they're important for each of these chapters. And then we have a table that identifies kind of action steps to moving toward those goals. In addition to that, we have case studies sewn into some of these chapters, so other communities in Wyoming and programs that might be a good reference point to dig in for more information we've highlighted as well. So jumping in, this is one of our economic development goals. So the goal itself, expand regional opportunities, business opportunities, and then under strategy, each of those individual items that were chosen. So these items came about through discussions with our stakeholder groups, public meetings. So we had like a pie chart where people essentially did a dot exercise of what are the really important topics to dig into and explore the action steps themselves. One of the other items that we built into the plan, so this is the mock-up of City Park, future mock-up. So we wanted to build in some opportunities that as you're going after grant funding, you can use some of these to show here's what the community looked at. Here's what the Parks and Rec Committee came up with as ideas that they want to implement. And some of these are already a little bit in the works, but yeah, like the splash pad. But just some some future ideas and making it easier to go after that funding. This is our future transportation network map, so and it's a little difficult to see at the scale, so I apologize. But essentially, the green circles are the key intersections that were identified as needing some further study and looking into, especially with new use of the airport and having that be being used more with the regular flights coming in. So so that intersection is definitely key, especially if Cooper Road connects in there. So looking at those alternatives, and then Sunset Boulevard was a big one that was highlighted. So just a lot of the plan builds in alternatives for those. We do still kind of have a qualifier in there that that discusses definitely needing individual intersection studies, you know, signal warrants, things like that. If you do decide to go down the road of looking at some of those alternatives more in depth when you get to implementation. This map also identifies, and it's a little difficult to see, but the black lines that mostly are vertical within there are the high priority areas for connections. So as roadways are connected, like making sure the whole system is connected, so you're not just having, you know, turnaround points and dead ends. And I want to highlight a little bit the future land use map. I'm a planner, so of course I get excited about land use. So what we wanted to do that was probably the biggest departure from the 2009 plan was look at the future land use plan and map and simplifying it, boiling it down a little bit, reducing the number of categories. And why we did that was to build in a little bit more flexibility. So as Riverton changes and grows, there's opportunity in there already sewn in. So should be more functional for you as a document. So these, this is the table that coordinates with it, and on the left are those general categories. That's about half of what was in the 2009 plan for good reference point. And then just discussion of what what that really means, how that should function, and some recommended zone districts within those items. This is the map itself. So as documents come, zone changes and that kind of those projects come before planning commission and council, this will be your good guiding point for for looking at that. There is, you'll notice a good amount of dominantly yellow and green in there, so the yellow is our residential area. And we wanted to build in that little bit more flexibility, so there is a bit of an overlay with higher density areas kind of closer into the commercial around the red areas. On higher use streets, that's probably where it makes more sense to do that, but not necessarily restricting it to that. And then agriculture, so a lot of that northern growth area where that will probably change and turn into more community services and residential and and commercial properties over time as Riverton grows. That's kind of the logical direction for that. That'll that'll change and kind of turn over, but just being careful that you're concentrating on not building all these city services, you know, to service only a few properties where it's, you know, maybe not as cost effective. And then additional resources, as part of the project, we're working with Idea Inc. and working with Kevin and his board on developing their updated work plan. We've also going to provide all the GIS data that we produced as part of this plan. And then we have a good stock of community photos as well that we'll be handing over for any future city endeavors. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll do some paperwork and then we'll get back to you, okay? We're right, we're right at that point, so would the city clerk please read resolution number 1394 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed resolution number 1394, a resolution of the City of Riverton adopting the 2019 Riverton Master Plan.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Borders and a second from Councilman Hancock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute with all applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Your Honor, members of the council.
Thanks.
Kevin Kurschisnik with Idea Inc. And just like to make a couple of comments is, first off, I think it's a great opportunity for us as a community to renew our strategic plan. Heers and Associates, Tony and his team, specifically Eric, have done an excellent job helping facilitate that. We had private listening sessions, we had group listening sessions and public listening sessions that were all beneficial. And I think it's a great plan and looking forward to implementing it. So I would encourage you to support the plan going forward.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? There being no others to speak, the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1394.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Hancock. Further discussion? Councilman Bailey.
Your Honor. And again, I planned on, over the weekend, going through this 147 pages pretty thoroughly. But there were a few problems with the link that they had given us and the website, and I had a hard time finding it, and I didn't get it until today. I guess, I think it's a huge amount of data for us just to gloss over in 10 minutes. I think it would be a good idea for us to table this and maybe go through it in better detail at a work session or something like that, where we can go through the details and and really look at it. I mean, I skimmed over it today as I had time. There's some areas that really concern me and just... So I think it would, we would not be doing it service if we didn't thoroughly go through this thing and really understand what we're putting forth. I am totally behind having a master plan and us updating it and, you know, keeping, you know, I came from the planning side of the equation, and I fully believe in having a plan and making sure that we have direction to go in the future. But I I see some some issues there that are concerning to me, and I'd like to get it thoroughly out where everybody can discuss it and we can go through in detail and get input and that kind of stuff.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Kyle.
I've been to several cities, and Billings, Montana is one of those. And we noticed in the future planning of some highway changes in semaphores. And I'm not really ready for those type of changes that propose great savings at a great cost. City of Riverton is short on funds, and I'm not really thinking that that's a step forward. I think it's a step backwards, and I'm with Mike. I think that we should table this situation, that we thoroughly discuss it and weigh the alternatives of stepping forward. I like Mike. We need a direct plan for success, and a master plan is that way to do it. It just has to be the right master plan.
Your Honor, I think in looking at it, the steps, I mean, the the more you get over to the right, the more that I might disagree with some of the the steps, right? The stuff on the left, I think I agree with everything there completely. The areas of focus, the general things that we want to do. It says you start to move over to the right, and I love the way it's organized, by the way. Makes it very easy. I mean, even to say that, that we're starting from the left and we're going over to the right. It says you move over to the right, that there might be some things that I might disagree with, and if we're going to adopt this, I don't want this to be something that we just kind of shelve, and and it's not something that we really believe in. I mean, to a certain extent, since I came on the council, I feel like the plan before, there's not been a lot of action on it. And I think part of the reason why is it wasn't something that maybe at the time it was adopted was completely bought into. And I want to make sure this is something that we have buy into as a council. I would actually, since we've been talking about tabling it, I'd move we table it, but I'm just not sure how long. Do we want to do a work session on it?
Well, Tony, tell us what what how you feel about tabling. Some people think it has to be brought up at the next meeting. Can we can we date that tabling?
Your Honor, I believe it is allowable to date it. In this case, moving it till, say, the August work session, the next regularly scheduled work session wouldn't hurt at all. That would also provide council the opportunity to give specific comments on particular items. So when we have that meeting, if there's particular, one, two, and three are fine, but four, five, and six are giving us some concern, then we can say, okay, let's focus on these a little bit more. But you can move it to that, table it and move until that meeting.
So then I'd move we table it until the next work session and discuss it at that point, but then have our next vote at the next regular meeting after that work session.
I would second that.
So let's get that timeline down so I understand it. So we'd have a, we would move it to the August 2 Tuesday to discuss it.
Yes, Your Honor.
And then we would vote on it when? The next council meeting?
We would, yes, Your Honor, we would present that to you with any changes that you wanted us to make.
Just a week later?
Yeah, if we have the input on the front end, we think that's possible. If for some reason we can't do that.
We could go to the...
Then we would move it, then we would, of course, move it because we wouldn't give you an incomplete document.
So it would move to the first September council meeting?
Yes, Your Honor.
So does that give you enough specificity to where we're headed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Is that all right with you? So we have the motion. It's it's an amendment to to what we have read. Is that correct? Do you want that to be an amendment?
I I don't know if it's an amendment. It's just we're saying we're going to table it. We've got the motion so that when we come back to it, we've already had the motion for it to be adopted. So then if we wanted any changes at that point, we would move for an amendment to what we have in the master plan. So I think that's just it. It's just if we if we voted on this motion, then we're moving it to the next.
So we're going to vote right here next to table this, correct?
Yes, Your Honor, tabling it till the work session.
Work session in the second week in August.
August 13.
Yes, Your Honor.
13, okay. All in, all in favor of tabling the item till August 13th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. It appears we've tabled that. We appreciate the presentation, and we'll get back to you. Thank you very much. Public hearing consideration for a new restaurant liquor license, Beverly... Muder? Muda? Muda? Public hearing consideration for a new restaurant liquor license, Beverly Moody, Muda, Muda? Doing business as Asian Cuisine Number Two. City Clerks, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration is a new liquor license, a new restaurant liquor license application for Beverly Moody, doing business as Asian Cuisine Number Two. The license application is requested at the address of 302 North Federal Boulevard. I will note that it was operated, there was a restaurant liquor license operated at that location before with a previous business as well. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application is complete. The proper fees have been paid and notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the new restaurant liquor license for Beverly Moody, doing business as Asian Cuisine Number Two.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilman Bailey. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I would declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute with all applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Doesn't look like anyone wants to speak. I'd move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Hancock and a second from Rebecca Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the new, the new restaurant liquor license for Beverly Moody, doing business as Asian Cuisine Number Two.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Schatz and a second by Councilman Rota. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Discussion referring to the realignment of West Main speed limit signs. City Administrator, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the previous regular council meeting, there was a discussion towards the end of the meeting with regard to alignment of the speed limit signs on West Main. At that time, there was not a motion. It is our understanding that YDOT is willing to consider alignment of those items, of those signs within that area without a speed, without a speed study. However, it would require a motion of council to pursue for staff to, to develop a letter of request, a simple, a simple paper, paperwork item, really. If council wish, at that time, there was also a discussion about whether or not we wanted the speed limit moved at one point, you know, either west or east along with that alignment. That can be part of the request of council, so chooses, keeping in mind that there is a light going in in that area, I believe, next year. So that second part would require a speed study likely, but council may make that request if they like. Council staff is happy to prepare the letter with your authorization. Would answer any questions if you have them.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Tony, did you say that we're getting a new light on West Main, but that's next year?
Correct.
And what we're asking is, if I'm right, Tim, we want the signs so that exiting Riverton is this speed limit and entering Riverton is this speed limit. And so you're saying that we don't need a, a traffic study to bring those two signs in alignment? If we, if we just keep the one on West Main, the speed of 45 after that, and we just bring the 30 speed up to it, we don't need, we don't need a traffic study?
Your Honor, yes, yes, Councilman, that is our understanding.
That's, that's, so this all started, I was, Victor Albrand, who lives over near, in the Reach Foundation, was talking to me about this. And, and, and his concern, and I, and I share it because I, I use that intersection a lot, Major and Sunset, is that you have people that, they're not slowing down until they get much closer to Major. You know, you've got 45 going there and, and frankly, the way he put it is, they're not slowing down at all, which I agree with him.
Well, the first, first, or the second sign is beyond Major?
Right.
And it's probably beyond Smith's.
It's at, it's right about at the Maverick store.
No. Well, that's the first one.
That's the, that's the, that's the one is you're heading out of town.
That's the one you disregard as you put your foot on the brake and you pass Smith's and you go, oh geez, I, and your wife hits you in the side of the ribs and so you slow down finally to 30.
Or you have a police car over there and it's been their practice just to turn on the siren real quick to tell people to slow down as they're coming in. I don't say this from any personal experience. I've seen cars ahead of me. Okay, fine, yes, I've been speeding there before. But I, you know, I think the point is, is that if you have that 30 sign there, you're kind of in preparation, and I think even YDOT had said this in the email back, it's like there's already going to be a stoplight that's going to be there, you're slowing people down a little bit earlier, and frankly, it makes sense because you've got the other sign there. And I think that's why they said there didn't need to be a speed study, because all you're doing is putting the two signs in alignment.
Just for clerical reasons, let's, let's see if there's a motion out there and then we'll discuss it in that motion. So the Chair would entertain a motion to...
Your, Your Honor, I would, I would move that we instruct staff to generate a letter to YDOT to align the signs on West Main, west of Major Avenue to align the 30 and 45 mile an hour speed limit signs.
So moved.
So we have a motion from Councilman Bailey and a second from Councilman Larson. Any, now, any further discussion? I think, I think that's all correct in what, what was previously said. The only thing that I would like to add is in speaking with the police chief, the police chief thought it would be a good idea possibly if those speed limits were moved to, to the stop, stoplights, correct, Chief?
Your Honor, College Hill.
And help me there.
College View.
College View.
Right.
And so that would take a, a speed study by YDOT, but we are in that, in that mode, so why don't we add this to the, to the request of the letter to see if they wouldn't do a, a study? They're going to realign, next year, they're going to put in ADA access all the way up Main Street and all the way to Hill Street. And we've given them, in previous meetings, we've given them access to those, those roads to make those changes. In, in conjunction with that, they're going to put in the stoplight at Majors and Main. And in doing so, they'll raise those dips out of the, out of the road on both sides. So there'll be a flat intersection there to go through, so we won't be dragging bottoms and we can get through there quicker.
My car will thank you.
Yeah, that's a good thing. So that's going to happen next year too, along with the addition of any damage to Main Street would be repaired at that time. So the motion is to have staff prepare the letter requesting the alignment between those two signs. The first 45 mile an hour sign is just past Maverick going west. And so we would ask that the 30 mile an hour sign, which is almost to Majors, be moved to the west to align with the 45 on the other side. In, in conjunction with that, we would ask the, the, our police chief would recommend that 45 mile an hour speed limit would start at College View and proceed west and 30 mile an hour speed limit would proceed east on Main Street. Is that clerically, clerically correct?
Yes, Your Honor, we have clarity.
Chief, is that good?
Your Honor, that is correct.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend it.
Is that all right?
As you've indicated, Your Honor, I think that'd be a good idea that we'd request not only, I, I think in the short term, the request, and I think he was willing to do that immediately, would be to move that sign to Maverick, but then request a speed study in conjunction with the recommendation from the chief to move it even further.
All in favor of that motion, would you please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
I guess as a point of order, we'd need a second on the amendment.
Okay.
I know everybody voted in favor of it, so I think we're fine, but...
I second thee.
Thank you.
So on the amendment, Kyle, you're the second?
Yes.
And who's the first? You want to be the first?
I was, Your Honor.
Okay. This is first and Kyle, you're the second. Now, do we want to re-vote?
Well, we can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Support for the Rendezvous Games, City Administrator, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really happy to be talking with you about this item, item today. The, the community engagement team, as well as the people who've been really involved with the rendezvous games, or rendezvous winter games are once, are at it once again and putting together a really awesome summer, a summer event. One of the things that we need to do as a city, if we wish to sponsor this, again, have them under our banner, is for council to make a motion to, to support and sponsor the bi-annual rendezvous games. It would probably be useful if we made a motion that include, that supported the bi-annual rendezvous games on an ongoing basis. That way, we don't have to come back to you. Once that is done, what we will do is work with the rendezvous games committee staff will continue to do so because we've already been kind of doing it. And to set those up, they would also be under city insurance on a special event, on a special event waiver or rider. And with that, we would not have to come back to you on an ongoing basis for that support. The first time we went around that we supported the winter rendezvous games and we wanted to be non-specific, that way we could just keep it going. And I think it's been a great event. It does carry our recommendation completely and we would happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to support the bi-annual rendezvous games on an ongoing basis.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman, or Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Rota. Further discussion? I, I think that this is a really great opportunity and it's even better now we don't have to vote on it again if this passes. So they are planning some exciting things and it's made a big difference in the, in the mood of Riverton and I would like to thank those people involved for that. So I, I think that this is a great opportunity for the City of Riverton. So with that said, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? Tim?
We're going to get a city team this year?
Yeah.
Are you going to be on the team, Tim? I'll volunteer, yeah.
If I would like to...
If it's pie eating, are we going to be eating food again?
Your Honor, there will be food eating, but we're not telling anybody what it is.
Uh-oh.
Is it, is it meant for human consumption?
Of course it is.
That sounded very...
Sinister.
I don't know if I volunteer anymore. I was going to volunteer for the food portion. That's something really where I feel my strength is. I mean, these physical activities, maybe no food. I got it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
We are wanting to do, so last year, we had people saying that it was not fair because the team that took it, Rock Mountain Logistics, was a bunch of big, strong men, so there's too much, it's not fair to us, you know, with these teams with four women and a child. So this year, we will have, we'll still have some physical ones where you have to have strength, but there's going to be a lot of other ones, like types of trivia, food eating and creativity and stuff like that, so.
No tug of war?
It's definitely the tug of war.
So if we got Tony, we should be all right.
That's right.
That should work, huh? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Memorandum of Understanding referring to Manita ID partnership agreement, City Administrator, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been having a conversation about the EIS study that has been going on now for almost, I mean, in excess of 10 years. That has recently got a lot more legs to it and we've been having a lot of public events about that. At one of the recent public events, it was, we found out that we are not a participating agency. A participating agency is usually, usually signs up at the very beginning of an EIS. Why that had not happened could happen for any number of reasons. But what being a, what a participating agency allows, being a participating agency allows us to do is take part not only in the ongoing efforts that the mayor and myself and others have been taking part in, but also to be at the table when the decisions start being made at the very end of this. This is a relatively big project for our community, for our region, has a lot of economic impact, has a lot of environmental impact. And so when we found out that we weren't, for whatever reason, a participating agency, we quickly sent a letter and said, hey, we really want to be part of this. They were happy, they were, the BLM and all involved were very helpful and provided us the MOU that you see before us. Legal has reviewed it and has no issues with it. Having done an EIS before, it's pretty standard. It doesn't really require anything of the city other than participation. The exception to that would be that if we disagreed with a particular study or a piece of information that is provided by a study, we are free to go and get our own opinion if we so choose, but that is not required. Mostly, it has to do with giving us formal standing at the table when decisions are being made. As such, the MOU before you allows us to do that. With your approval this evening, we'll, we'll execute the agreement and send it back and then continue the efforts that have already been ongoing. I don't think you'll see a lot of formal change in terms of our involvement because we've already been at all the public hearings, we've already been having the conversations, preparing letters, providing formal input. So we recommend that council approve the MOU as presented and we will look, we would be happy, be happy to answer any questions about it at this point.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the MOU as presented.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the environmental impact statement, memorandum of understanding.
Thank you.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Mike, Councilman Bailey with the motion and Councilman Hancock with the second. Any further discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
Just noted here that on page three, we're supposed to insert statutory reference there, just so we can do that before we send it into them, I suppose.
We will make sure that it is complete before it is submitted.
I mean, it already has insert name here. I know that's going to be inserted, but I've turned in things to courts that have like insert something here and it's really embarrassing. Just FYI.
Any other discussion? You know, this, Tony talks like he had a mouse in his pocket. I was with him when he, when this came about. We were at the library and the BLM made the statement that we could be partner on this after, after the discussion was over. And he, within hours, went right back, it was after, the meeting was at 6:30 or so, he returned back to the office and got all that paperwork put together and got us the seat at the table. And by, by morning, we were in. And so I appreciate that and, and the quick service and that will make a big difference, I do believe, for us to be in. Lander was already in, isn't that correct?
I believe that's correct.
And, and we weren't and, and we also mentioned it to the, to the town of Shoshone to get theirs in, and so I hope they're in also.
Your Honor, I would also add just one item. I actually had a conversation this morning with the city administrator over in Casper. Casper, we talked with them at the WAM convention about it. They want, they're preparing support for it also. There, also, we talked about them being a participating agency as well. Being, having additional participating agencies doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt us, in at least having Casper on the same, at the same table with us, having the same conversation is a great help. So we're, that was something that happened this morning, I forgot to say, but we would be happy to have them at the table.
And when we were at WAM, Casper was unaware of the meetings and they were going to happen the, the next following Monday in Riverton and Tuesday in Casper. And so they were given the information and they did attend. It, it was good to have and for some reason, they hadn't seen it come through. So I appreciate all your work on that, Tony. You did a good job.
Your Honor, one more thing, sorry.
Yes.
It, we're supposed to have a primary representative and a backup representative. Do we need to have that figured out too? How are we intending to do that?
Probably the easiest way to do it in the way that I've seen it happen before. The mayor's been involved in the process to date and as the senior elected, that's probably appropriate, having myself as the backup that allow, that allows us to do an elected and a staff person. So if the mayor isn't available... So, if the mayor isn't available, I could step in. That would probably be my recommendation.
I'm in agreeance to that. Any other, any other suggestions? Anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Website presentation, city administrator's report, please.
I love IT. If anybody doesn't know our IT people, they should, they're wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The good news is, is the last time you'll have to hear from me in open session this evening. The, I mean, this is another item, I've been really excited about the Rendezvous Games, but honestly, this is one of those items that I've been very personally excited about. We have unveiled, or rolled out, our new website. Our new website has been in development for quite a few months. Before we get started, I wanted to have a list of everybody that's on our committee. Megan, I know you're on there, could you tell me who all, let me, everybody know, all? Do you remember them all?
Yeah. Bob Sprague from Community Development, Krista Ramage from Public Works, Andrea Luton from the Police Department, and then Tim and Alex and I, so.
This committee has put together what you're seeing today, and helped doing, helped do the transition from the old format to the new format. Now, keeping in mind, many of you will remember that we had, we're having, we're using the same company, but the product is very different. It's expanded, it's gonna be useful, and so what we wanted to do tonight was briefly, just give you some of the highlights of some of the things that are happening. Obviously, there's a very new look to the website, where you remember the old one, this one actually moves down with multiple, multiple pictures scrolling through on an ongoing basis. Of course, those can all be modified. We can add, subtract, change. This new site has much more in the way of customization options for us to continue to use. Additionally, it does not consistently require IT to make every change. The team that you had, that was just mentioned to you, will have the ability to make many of the changes on an, their department. That gives us a lot more redundancy without adding cost or people, and it may take a little bit off of IT, but I don't know. Those guys have been really great in putting this together, and getting some of this, some of these items together. Just quick items, you have different control buttons across the top, and we're gonna get to those a little bit more. These all are, help you navigate throughout the site. Also, a search. We have mega buttons, or there's a lot of different names, so I'm not gonna use all the right ones, including making online payments. I'll get to report a concern, because that's one of the big ones. We have our career opportunities, links to our NeoGov, meetings and minutes, the Riverton Master Plan, the Riverton Municipal Code, our documents and forms, and email alerts, another one of the items we're getting to. One of the things that we've talked about a little bit, as part of this, is trying to have one clearinghouse for our community to post different items. So, hey, we have this event going on, Rendezvous Days is a good one, the city council meeting is another one. Where do we go? Okay, do I go to the chamber here, and do I go here? What we wanted to do was provide a format, or provide a single source that people could go to on an ongoing basis, and that's what we've tried to do here. Beyond just these announcements and news right here, we have all of these upcoming items along the left. If we go to all events, we go to the calendar. If I go, well, you can export the calendar by using the iCal function, you can export it to your phone. Additionally, we have multiple calendars. Currently, it's at the master level. If I go to community events, I can go to all the different community events. If I only want to see economic development, because of course, one of our partners is Idea Inc., that's an item that could be there. But of course, anything here, again, will show on the master. The, we can reserve meeting rooms through this, and you can see what is available at a given time, and we can talk about park reservations at the same time.
Wow.
So, our intent, let's talk a little bit about intent for just a second. Our intent is to make sure that we provide a product, a service to our community where people want to be, and then when people use it, that has value for not only our community, but our partners and the city. And I think we're doing that a little bit with this. We're, one of the other nice items is that, once, I'll get to how you make a request in a minute, but if I click on our city council meeting this evening, and here's, we want to be open, we like transparency, so of course, you can export it to your calendar through this function, but I also want to know what the packet is. Here's your packet. It's automatic, it automatically loads for anybody to see. So, all of the items that council sees, now are being seen here.
That will be on Friday of last week? You would have seen that?
Yes, sir. That's, that's our, that's our, I believe that was, was that linked at that time? Okay, yes. So, as you see it, everybody can go and see it. And what, the idea is that, over time, the word will spread, if you want information, here's where you go, here's how you get it. So, one of the nice things.
So, this is up and running right now, Tony?
This is running right now. I loaded it directly from our site.
Yay.
So, if I want to reserve, or submit an invent or news item from the public, I go here, I type my name, my phone number, my email, the date of the event, the start time and the end time, any details, and then that is, then I hit submit, I have to prove I'm not a robot, so you do have to pick, play, pick the right picture game. But that's to make sure that we don't have abuse. That information is then forwarded to staff. We will talk a lot over the coming months about workflow, where things go once they're submitted here. I'll talk about that a little bit more, but then that is submitted, we make sure that it's okay to have, and then we put it on the website. We put it on that calendar. That way, we make sure that, hey, there are certain things we might not want on the calendar. I don't know what those are, I won't get into them, but there are things that we might not want there. As such, we have that little check on it. Keeping in mind that Kevin from Idea will probably have access to their calendar, the economic development calendar, that's a conversation we'll probably want to have with our chamber, because those are our partners. We're not as worried about those, we have a consistent working relationship and representation on those groups. So, this is one of those nice items that can, that can be used by the entire community, and we look forward to having that out there. One of the things we will be doing is going around to the community, so RECDA, Idea Inc., Rotary, Kiwanis, and we'll be trying to say, here, you know, let's get this information out, start using this, we'd like to see you use it. The more you use it, the more it's useful. Starting back over up here a little bit, there are a couple other items that were, sorry, sir?
As this becomes more popular, do we have enough bandwidth on it so that it'll hold up versus being crashed? Right now, my internet is down, because everybody is looking at it. So, do we have enough bandwidth to look at this from the outside?
I'm going to say yes. And then if I'm wrong, I'm gonna apologize later. Yes, I believe, I believe we absolutely do. These sites are set up to be looked at, right now, you're all looking at it right now, you're using our internet in here. As far as the community using the site, the hosting of it externally allows us to not have some of the same problems that we had before, or would have if we were hosting it locally. So, I don't think we're going to have too much of a problem, but I'm gonna double-check to make sure I'm not completely wrong. There are a couple other items. One of the things that you're going to see with websites now is that they communicate differently. They're not a stagnant page where you go for information, where we just, hey, send it here. Websites are being developed to speak to people on an ongoing basis, and to provide for alerts, provide for information in a push notification, and they're, and they're set up to provide for individuals to provide feedback to the organization. So, we took those two things into account. One of them is the report a concern function, and you can go to this a couple different ways. I just went to the nice, big mega button. Here's a citizen request center, request category. We populated this with a few right now. This can change, they are not stagnant, they can, we can say, hey, nobody is giving us any conversations about debris and graffiti, but we may need a lot more complement sections, you know, to really specify. Each department will get theirs. I can dream. And so, if we want to say, okay, I want to give a compliment, name, email address, phone number, what's the issue, or what do you want to say, whether it be animal control code violation, non-emergency public safety items, park repair, all of these different items are items that they can provide information for. Here's the nice part, when you select one of these, and then you, and then you put information in, you will have the ability, that, that request will, is already, moves to the appropriate department. So, if you have a public safety item, Chief Murphy is probably going to get it. If you have a code violation, Eric Carr is probably going to get it, as well as other members of those departments. That makes sure that the information is getting to the right people, and then they can respond, and they have that information. So, we look, the other thing this can do is you can attach pictures. If you look right here, you can attach, so if you say, here's a code violation, okay, click, here's a picture, send it on my phone, it's, this is mobile compatible. You can provide that. If you say, here's a, here's a pothole that I lost a Buick in, okay, you can see the back end of the Buick. Okay, that's a big pothole. So, these are things that we'll, we'll be using. This is one way where our community can talk to us. Now, the other... Okay, I'm sorry. It's in request. Receiving email alerts. The other way is for us to push items out. So, we all know we want to provide information, and as such, we can set up this site with different categories, such as you see here, where you go and you put your email in, you opt in, and you say, I want to hear about any minutes from the council meeting, any council, any special events, and anything on the economic development calendar. Click, click, click. Now, anytime we post one of those items in there, you get an alert. Megan does, Megan, Kristen, myself, anybody, doesn't have to, okay, I gotta remember to send it to Councilman Rhoda, or none of that, it's just, it's in there and it gets pushed out. That allows us to communicate on an ongoing basis a little better.
Tony, where did you, what button did you push to get that?
So, with that, we would go... That's, that's a good, how do I, is always a nice place to start up here. How do I receive email alerts? The other nice thing is, we can put multiple categories in here. Right now, we have three preloaded. So, you can get, you know, city news, meetings and minutes, and then general alert detail. But, we can have many of these. So, the best part about the website designs these days is that they allow us the ability to customize. So, why is it not already customized for you? Well, because part of doing it is determining what we need as a community. We can't do that in a vacuum, in a room. We have to put it out there, and we have to take feedback. So, the request is that we make sure that if you have feedback, hey, we think this would be a neat idea, hey, I think we should get in, get alerts on any, any different item, then those are the things we want to hear. You can call us, you can email us, or you can report a concern. So, you can actually use the website to tell us how to make the website better. We think that's pretty useful.
Okay, Tony, I pushed the, how do I, how do I, and then I got this yellow bar that dropped out?
Yep.
And then you go down to reports?
You go, receive.
Receive, okay.
And then email alerts.
Okay, super.
So, we have a number of different items in here. I'll try, I have one other one, other than just the great pictures, other than the different news stories that we have. This, we can explore from different perspectives, information for residences, for business, and for visitors. We have an entire economic development section. This currently links to the Idea Inc. website, but they are going to have their own built-in to ours. That's part of our partnership that we've developed. So, the, what we're trying to do is, if people are, want to come here, they want to look, we can work through Idea Inc. as our economic development arm, and provide statistical data through there, we can provide resources, and we can hook them up, hook up people when they come into town with the right people. Find the, help for recruitment, help for retention, all different items. So, we want to provide information through that portal for economic development. Keeping in mind, it doesn't mean that information can't be in multiple places, but we all kind of want to lead to the same information. So, when we, when we, when the site is updated in one section, we don't have to update three sections, it all just points to the right place. The...
Tony?
Yes, sir.
Does this have any, on economical development, does this have any job openings or ability to look at what school district 25 has in teaching positions? Right now, there are 63 unfilled teaching positions in Riverton, having a hard time finding candidates for that. That would be an economic development for City of River.
Absolutely. We are able to do those kind of things. The only thing that we usually say is that if we're going to put the school district, and we probably have some guidelines, but the school district, the college, the general job boards, those are resources, as long as we're, we're not keeping anybody out, really, yeah, we can do all of that. And that's good, and that's good things to have, because, hey, we want you to use the site, the more you use it, the more it's useful. We can also, if there's economic development tools, links to the state, all of those things can be developed as part of that, as a resource, as a resource page, and, and those are some of the things we've talked about. We don't have them completely up and running, but they will be part of our future development.
So, this is an open source, and it can be enhanced, or whatever the buzzword look is today of making it easier, more comfortable, movable, et cetera?
Yes, this is meant to be tailored to us, not to, not, it's not a stagnant model. It should be modified to us, so we can do it the way we want to, and have on it what we want to have.
Cool.
Mayor, Tony, if I could ask real quick, so on the economic development, if somebody were to say, okay, we want to be able to post job, any job kind of posting in Riverton is allowed on there, is that kind of what I'm getting, you just can't not allow anybody?
No, no, we can provide links. So, the school district has its own, let's use the school district. School district has its own hiring page, and we want to say, here are resources, here are job openings within the community, the state unemployment office, or all of those. Any, any general public places that you have job openings or job pages? Yeah, we can absolutely.
They can just post their link on there?
You just click on the link, and you can go there. Here's our places that you can go. We do not host that job, we do not host that vacancy for them.
We're just giving them somewhere to put a link, actually.
But it's a hyperlink somewhere embedded on here.
Yes.
So, now, would it be possible, how you have the receive email alerts, to where you could connect that somehow, to where if somebody were to post a hyperlink, they would get an email that says, hey, the economic development had a new hyperlink posted by so-and-so, is that how that works?
I'm gonna, I'd have to look about how, how that plays in, but I'm not, so I'm not absolutely sure about that one.
Okay.
But it's a good question to find out if we can, because then it's a resource if somebody's looking for jobs.
Right.
The other item that is just kind of, is kind of nice, is this site is also linked to our Facebook page. Megan has done, we've talked about how good Megan has done getting us followers on our Facebook page, and how well we do with posting, so that is much appreciated. At the very bottom, and at the very bottom of each page, you can see that the last Facebook post. So, if your trash is normally picked up on Thursday, please have it out by 7:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, Wednesday, July 3rd. That way, it's just another opportunity for us to give good information out. And that happens, I don't, that, does that happen automatically? Okay. I didn't know if you had to take a second step. So, with that, what I would encourage everybody to do, other than, please, ask any questions, and we'll hopefully be able to answer them, is take a look at it. There are gonna be some broken links. We have transferred all the data from the old site, but this is not the old site, so we will try, we will be working on that. IT has done a great job of doing some of the mapping. Our committee has done a great job of putting this together, and we're very appreciative of the items that we have. So, please explore it, give us recommendations and ideas, and we'll be happy to continue to develop it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Let me see if that's.
One last thing I want to point out, is if you get a chance, go under Business, and then go to City Maps. Tony didn't take the time to show you, I'm sure he's got plenty, but this map that he's got basically shows you all your landmarks and attractions. But this map that he's got basically shows you all your landmarks and attractions and you can zoom in. I'll go ahead and let you explain, Tony, because this is one of my favorite features.
This is also one of my favorite parts because this is something Megan did. So I get to point at Megan all the time with these. She's been, what she did is used, this runs through Google Maps. Megan put this together and this is still the, I think, first version, but it can be expanded. So anytime somebody wants to use a map of this community and they look at here and they find, hey, I want to go to Riverton, I want to find any number of items, whether it be lodging, parking, recreation, restaurants, you can go to any of these items. So where am I at? Jackson Elementary. Or I hear, there's a french fry. I like french fries. Arby's. So still running through Google. And then I'm on my phone and I hit map it. Okay, I can map it. It'll automatically map on your phone. You can engage your directional device, the directions, and it can guide you there. The nice thing for that is that if people are visiting our community and they're trying to find things, we can help guide them there. So this was really well done and we're, part of this site may be used to, the feedback portion, somebody says, listen, I'm new to town. I've started a business, but I'm not on your map. Okay, here's an option. You can please put me on your map. Here's my location. And then it can get put on, and then it can get put on the map. And we can get that help updating that map so we can provide more information for our community and our visitors.
Does it scare you that it knows that you're using one finger instead of two?
Probably.
You got to use two fingers to move the map, not one?
So.
That's amazing.
With this, we can, and we've talked about this a little bit, we can take all of these off and select only certain ones. I need to know gas stations and restaurants. Here they are. Bailey's. We can find Mike. So this is one of the, this is one of the nice features, but this wasn't built by the site. This was built by Megan, so.
Good job, Megan.
Good job.
Good job, Megan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Very exciting. Well done. Very well done.
Tony, the script stops right there. Do we need anything addition?
Your honor, I'd recommend executive session for the purposes of litigation.
Okay. We do have reports and comments before we get to that. So Councilman Bailey, do you want to start us tonight?
Yeah, I don't have anything this evening. It seems like at the end of the month, when we have one of these where we skip a week, it's like you're lost almost. I'm used to interacting all the time, so.
Excuse me.
Tim, do you have any?
I don't have anything either.
We're smoking a lot.
We've lost.
Carla.
I just have two things. One, I'm just sitting here mind blown. I just, I can't get over how cool this is. It's amazing. And I think you guys should be commended for the job you've done. The other thing is the Maps, Google Maps day that we had last week, it was so amazing to see how everybody worked together to get the town cleaned up, to get all of our features on display. And it was just a really, really neat thing to see. So that's about all I had.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. I've got July 15th at 6 o'clock here in City Hall, we'll have our first community service organization gathering. Our goal is to have all the different organizations, at least one or two member from each one try to attend so we can kind of streamline everybody's plans. I'm really going to try to push this website at that time because I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to start getting their events on the calendars. So we really want to encourage everybody to be here for that, whether you're in an organization or maybe even just want to join an organization. It'll be a great opportunity to meet some of the people from other boards. So we encourage everybody to be here for that. The Fremont County Good Samaritan Senior Center is still looking for board members. So if there's anybody who is wanting to step up and help them out, they've had two people inquire. Only one of them has actually wrote a letter of interest. So I just want to put a plug in for them. I'll let Becca talk about the rendezvous games coming up. And then with July 4th, I did just want to do a little safety plug. Take a fire extinguisher, bucket of water, keep a hose close by. I know we're going to be shooting them off in town this year. I'm very excited for it. I just want to make sure everybody's still responsible about it. So that is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you give us a date on that first item that you?
July 15th. And it's. Yes, sir. And that'll be at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
And I believe it's here in the chambers. Is that correct, Rebecca?
In City Hall.
And, Your Honor, that is on the calendar.
Okay, thanks. If I can just navigate to that, it'll be, that's perfect. Thank you. Kyle, do you have anything?
I do. Carla alluded to the Google Day. And if somebody missed it, it was sad. I drove down Main going to my office and as I turned the corner, there was, across from the city park, there was big stands there. And I'm thinking, what in the heck is going on? All the flags were up and down Main Street and there were people everywhere. And they were selling items at the chemical station there. And farther on down in the first median, there was a retired military sitting there saluting. He was in full dress uniform. And in my parking lot, there was a local doctor there, had his Harley Davidson with a skeleton on it and a pair of glasses. And it was, well, there was more participation on this day than we had on the eclipse, the ellipse. And it was, it just showed that Riverton will come together when the call is given. It was very heartwarming to see that type of cooperation. And nobody, but nobody was being paid or funded or anything else. They just showed up and it was a hoot. The second thing I want to talk about is that calendar that, or the city webpage is really cool. I think you guys have done a great job to do something like that that can bring in, it's like tentacles, they will fill up. And that is the service. You can give out snow reports, you can tell about road problems, you can water. I mean, instead of being so frustrated and not being able to navigate, you'll be surprised how many people with smartphones will be able to. There are a lot of people my age that won't be able to use it, but no, we're going to die one of these days and be replaced by people that can use those devices. And that's how we provide service. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. You know what you could do is a tutorial, maybe one night, once a month, your tutorial, the website for people that are having trouble. So Community Engagement Committee, we met last night. We are switching up our locations every other week. So last night, we met at the Little Depot Fountain. It's kind of a nice little relaxing area. Two weeks from now, we will meet at the, behind Rendezvous School, next to the old track, there's a little area for like a greenhouse. That's where we're going to meet the next week. So at that meeting, we had a special guest, Karen Pedan, who is in charge of the Riverwalk event, which is going to be held next Friday after this event. She does it yearly at this time. And it is not, there's no vendors. What it is, is there's just citizens with little booths where they're not selling anything. They're just trying to entertain the community, entertain children. So next Friday, if you wanted to do that, please bring your families out to enjoy a night of just music, fun, entertainment at no cost. There was, we're talking about the rendezvous games, we went over that. So now that the council has approved the rendezvous games continuing, the registration is officially open tomorrow. I sent out the registration form to Megan at the city. So that'll be available to you to register. And I also want to thank our sponsors that we have as of right now to cover any additional costs that we don't currently have. We have the Wood River Radio Network, who is, YO Today is doing our advertising sponsorship, All About Entertainment, doing our music that day, as well as Central Bank and Trust has also offered to donate funds to support the games. I think those are all of our sponsors that are right now. But just want to say thank you to them. I want to give a shout out to Ashley Strickland, who is the new chamber director. She has really hit the ground running. I don't know if anybody's got to talk with her, but she really has. She has gone out of her way to get the community involved, ask questions. She's leaving no stone unturned when it comes to making sure the community is getting involved, which I think is really great. Hopefully she keeps up that momentum. Kicking Trash, we are going to start kicking some trash tomorrow, Wednesday, 4:00 p.m. We're starting at the U.S. Energy Building. People might also know that as the DMV or the Department of Family Services. We'll start there and work our way north up North 8 West, as far as we can go before we get too tired and then make our way back. And then I want to say thank you to all of the city crews who made the splash pad possible. It is now up and running from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day, except for every other Monday, correct, Megan? Is that the last we heard? Every other Monday? Okay, that's the last we heard, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Except for every other Monday where they'll do maintenance. But that is all I have today.
Thank you. City Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is a force committee meeting next week. And the only other item, at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, the only other item that I have is that it's that time of the year where council needs to work on probably some goals, updating goals for the coming year. I would propose that the next work, this coming work session be used for that. I would, if council is able to, maybe a meeting at 6:00 p.m. for the work session would allow council to go over the goals that they had last year and to update them as we did in the past. I would coordinate that if it's your liking and would kind of think that might be a good time. If council would like to push that off or do it at a different time, we can accommodate. But at this point, it would probably be a good idea to set that date.
Your suggestion was to move into the bullpen or the urbi room for that?
Yes, Your Honor. In the past, when we've done goal setting, that's, well, the only other one I did, was done in those rooms. It is still a public meeting. It is still open to the public. However, we have found that the, having people around a table promotes discussion more than it does working to and from the desk.
Do you need that in a motion?
If council is, not necessarily. If council, if that's okay with council in general, then.
Is anybody opposed to 6 o'clock next Tuesday meeting? To discuss goals? That works.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
I would like to, you know, today I was out at lunch at the pit stop. I might throw a plug in for that. And a gentleman that I did not know came up to me and said he would like to tell me that he believes the City of Riverton is looking better. And that's not the first conversation I've had with somebody like that. And I would just like to thank all the people that took part in kicking trash. Kicking trash goes off multiple times a week. Wednesdays, Sundays, watch Facebook, you can get in. It's not easy to make the team, but you got to try. So it is fun when you go and we do enjoy the effort. And so the splash pad has been remarkable. I'd like to thank the chief. I had communications with him today and he is looking forward. He has put another, assigned another shift to the park to make sure that that works well and goes good. And those guys are out there promoting that. Google Day was amazing. I got the opportunity to go to the airport and Rocky Mountain Sporting Goods brought in the Sasquatch and placed it in the building. And they took, they took still shots that were 360 degrees in four different locations through the building. And then they moved us to the outside of the building. And I've seen those on Google before. I'm not a great Facebook person, but they had all these animal heads that they had everybody wear. And so they pulled in a Jeep and a sports car and another one from Hertz. And everybody had, we took the top off the Jeep and we got in the back of the convertible and they had all sorts of Yeti coolers that they had all stacked around and bears and deer and elk and targets that you could shoot. And they stacked them all around the cars out there and then they did the drive-by with the car and then they did some still shots. And so it was, it was a lot of fun to be involved in that. And Kathy Klein was at our location and she was, she was making things work there. So we have some fantastic volunteers in Riverton. There's just no way to say it any other way. The meetings that I had this week, I met with Sage West, which was an interesting meeting. Met their new CEO. John is a very pleasant fellow and enjoyed him. Councilman Bailey was there. That was a good meeting. The BLM meeting for Aethon, we had a lot of people in conjunction with that. Tony and I were there. Eric, were you there? You, would have been a meeting you would have enjoyed. So I thought I would have seen you there. But there's just a lot of people involved in that, in that meeting. And there must have been, how many BLM agents do you think were there? It's a little scary.
Ten?
Must have been 10 of them or so. There's a bunch of them. Tony and I also went to the library for their strategic planning meeting. And that meeting went off kind of late. And as we got out of, they had to let us out the back door of the library. I've never had to go out the back door of the library before. So I did get to go out the back door. And as I came around to the front, we had an individual playing the piano, playing with the piano in the foyer there. And so that was kind of fun. I attended the planning commission and had a great discussion there. Also, Bell Street is, had a public meeting for its opening. And I went to that. We had four concerned citizens there and that's going to, that's going to work pretty good. It's going to commence after, start right after. It's Monday, I believe, is when that'll kick off and go. I got invited to speak at the Garden Club. Anybody been to the Garden Club? What a fun thing. I didn't know what I was doing when I got there, but they filled me in on what it was. And the Garden Club's been in existence in Riverton for 65 years. And so they've done a lot of work there and it was the state convention at the range. And so they had a lot of people there and it was a lot of fun. FTAG met this last week. FTAG is the Fremont County Association of Governments. And all the mayors are in attendance there along with others. And we met in Pavilion, which was kind of a fun thing to do. And so in conjunction with that, I had a meeting Monday with the mayor of Hudson and the mayor of Lander in Lander at 6:30 in the morning Monday. I don't know who planned that, but I'm going to get to the bottom of that and see if I can adapt their calendar. But I would, I would like to give a special thanks to the Riverton City Council and for their efforts to support and to help and to sit through some long meetings to find out what's the best for Riverton. And I think that's kind of what they're, what we're going to do with the master plan. And I see the work that they're doing and I appreciate your efforts. With that, that's all the comments I have. We do have an executive session tonight. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into the executive session for the purpose of litigation, considering litigation to which the governing body is or may be party in accordance with Wyoming State Statute 16-4-405A. Aye, aye, aye. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion is passed. Chair would invite Kristen Watson and Tony Tolston to be in attendance, please. The chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Bailey, second by Councilwoman Schatz, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion, motion passed. Reconvene at 8:47. Any action items?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion.
So, motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
I'm jumping to 19. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn regular council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hancock, second by Councilman Rota. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, we stand adjourned. This meeting of the Riverton City Council stands, stands adjourned at 8:49. Thank you very much.